It being an honor about 7:00 p.m. meeting will come to order. Good evening. I'm going to get some glasses on. Planner's report.
Hello, everybody. So let's see what we have going on today. So the first topic has to do with COVID resiliency. We've been working with the EDC. Kevin and I have been talking. We've actually been working on developing a survey with a couple of members of the EDC to solicit some input from businesses on sort of how they're doing and what sort of support the town can offer, if anything. I mean, obviously, the town's ability to support is somewhat limited, but it feels like we should have a sense. And I think I've talked about this with you a bit. I've been doing some research because the big thing we've all been talking about is outdoor dining. As you know, Foxborough has 17 temporary outdoor dining locations, and that's in addition to several that have outdoor dining that was permitted already. So that doesn't mean that we only have 17 outdoor dining locations. But it's going to start getting cold, and people might not want to dine out as much. So I started doing some research. It was interesting to see that Chicago's sort of at the front of that, and Chicago is darn cold. They're offering $5,000 prize to the person who comes up with the best idea for how to support outdoor dining. They've talked about using expanding street closures, using tents, heaters, and blankets, and plastic domes. They point out that, you know, in European cities and Colorado ski towns, they provide outdoor dining throughout the year. Another restaurant, this one in San Francisco, they talked about little tips on it, like replacing metal furniture with tables and chairs that aren't, don't conduct the cold because it just feels colder, having greenery and shrubbery as shielding to kind of provide breaks from the wind, and offering blankets that are laundered between each use. Those are just some of the ideas. Then even menus, you have like cozy menus. When I read that, though, what I think about is money, money, money. I mean, all those things we're talking about cost money, and we know these restaurants and businesses, you know, are already challenged in that regard. So, but we've been sort of focusing on that. Tomorrow, town staff is getting together, the Board of Health, building, fire, police, DPW, planning, town management, to start setting up guidelines for outdoor dining in the winter. Because when if you bring up a tent and heat, the building commissioner and the fire chief's eyes and heads explode. So we're trying to see if, you know, if there is going to be a specification that can be met to allow something in the winter. So stay tuned on that. Interestingly enough, I also attended a meeting this morning online for the Franklin Downtown Partnership. I live in Franklin. I'm a member of that just as a resident. But it looked like the topics, I wanted to listen in on all their ideas. So I attended the meeting today, and we had some state reps and state senators there. So I was able to write in there to ask them for help in getting the note. Right now, the governor's order to allow this outdoor dining and to allow liquor outside expires November 1st. So I asked them to see about getting that extended. I know. And then I emailed Jay Barrows and Paul Feeney. Hour later, it was done. You're welcome. The governor took care of it. He heard my message this morning. And we got it.
I was going to say, you know, I got home, and there was a thing that said that Baker extended it.
So you're welcome, everybody.
Great work, Paige.
How long did he extend it for, though?
We don't know any details yet. I just saw the news headline. And obviously, I'm speaking in jest. He obviously had this in the works, but, so that's great news. So now it's time to start figuring out what that means.
Hot tubs, you know, just like in ski towns, they have hot tubs.
We're probably not allowed hot tubs right now. Not allowed to do anything. Can't go to the showers or locker rooms or anything. Can't imagine to do hot tubs, but we'll see. So stay tuned. The EDC is going to be working on it, but I know Ron was real passionate about the temporary outdoor dining, and I know the board was really supportive. So stay tuned, and if you have any ideas, you hear of anything, feel free to share them.
So do you think that if they didn't have a covering, like some kind of a pop-up or a tent, that like, you know, in southern climates, even in, you know, like Florida, Georgia, whatever, even in the wintertime, they put those heaters up, would they allow them if they didn't have a covering? Do you think that the fire department and the building department?
I think without a cover, you're allowed a heater.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think Union Straw has heaters currently, and they do not have the cover.
Yeah. Then I started thinking, though, like, I can only imagine how hard it is to get a heater right now. Because first of all, there's so many supply chain issues just in general, and then you figure every restaurant and family. I mean, think about, like, I know someone we work with was like, oh, I'm on a waitlist for a heater for my deck. So you can just imagine that this is a very hot commodity right now. The good news is, in the press release that I saw about this temporary outdoor dining being extended, they've also been talking about the shared streets program. Unfortunately, we've been looking at the shared street program to see if there was anything we can do. It works well in, say, Norwood. We haven't really been able to figure out how to make anything work here. That said, we're reinvigorating our look at it just because the governor did say that this funding could be used to purchase heaters and lighting. So I was like, oh, we've got it. So Chris is going to now come to our meeting tomorrow morning and start looking into whether there's any ability to help some of these people with funding.
Why do you think it works better in Norwood?
Why what?
Why do you think it works better in Norwood?
I think because they have more restaurants around a park area, you know, around their sort of common area, and we, you know, we don't, I mean, I was trying to, this afternoon, I was just trying to think of what restaurants, at least, like, what roads could we close that would support more business, you know? And you kind of almost want like an economy of scale. You probably can't do it for one restaurant, but if you had, so, but I'm not even sure of that. Maybe there are roads, or I know certain areas of Norwood I read that are shut down, and they have parklets, and I think that's where they're allowing restaurants to serve food. I haven't been up there to see it. I don't know if anybody else has been up there.
Kevin, in Norwood also, there's a very favorable street layout. There's three parallel streets, and then there's a right of way.
Yeah, that's true. You're right. You're right.
So it doesn't impede traffic flow. There's alternatives. So it's a no-brainer.
So we don't seem to have that set up here. But if anybody thinks of anything, let us know, because we're just trying to put our creative thinking caps on and trying to find as much. And then I feel bad, because then I'm like, all this focus on restaurant, what about businesses? But, you know, hopefully, they won't be having another shutdown. You know, I spoke to someone today who gave me some confidence, pointed out that, you know, we're probably just, and who knows, but being more of a level, level of COVID, and you might have spikes, but hopefully, we won't get back to the shutdown. Because that was the thing, you know, we just don't want these small businesses to go through that again, or any businesses to go through that again. So I got a little hope today, feeling like, all right, maybe we won't have to shut down. Maybe we could just ride the storm, and things will continue on in Massachusetts anyway. So we'll see. Off that topic. Now to the other topic of the housing, Housing Authority project. That's, as you know, there's 16 acres on Walnut Street. We're trying to keep that moving. So we applied for a MassWorks grant to get some assistance to develop an RFP. It's a very challenging and exhaustive process with a lot of intricacies. So hopefully, we will get some funding on that. In the meantime, we're going to start getting staff together to start mobilizing, like, what needs to be done to get this ready, to really kick it off, mostly to get the Housing Authority on board and make sure that they want me to run it, which I'm kind of doing. And I'm not running it, but you know what I mean, taking the lead on it. So obviously, this is a Housing Authority project. I defer to them entirely. I just, I know through all my housing work how needed this housing is. So hopefully, we can all work together and get this moving. Going back to the housing production plan, the Housing Coalition continues to meet the first Thursday of the month, 6:00 p.m. on Zoom, and everybody's welcome. With respect to the housing plan, we're in the final phase, look for a draft in the next month or so. More information, I did ask MAPC that when, the next time, when they release the information, we want all of it. You know, we want a plan. We don't necessarily want, because the ultimate goal is to get the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to approve it. And, you know, it was very clear that you all are going to want to see the whole thing, digest the whole thing, and, you know, not do it in one night. So we're going to try to get it out there, get it fully vetted, get everybody see the whole context, and go from there. So we expect that sometime in October, that it'll start. For the fire station appeal, submitted the paperwork to Town Council, and the responses are due next week. So we're in good shape, pretty much done. I got to get the butters list over to them. We, I guess I didn't send it to them, so. For the grant that we got for the microenterprises, that's for businesses five or fewer employees, that, the only thing I can say on that is it's slowly moving forward, but there is a Zoom meeting next Wednesday, the 16th, at 2:00 p.m. So if anybody is interested in this, even if you don't think you're eligible, if there's a question.
Has anybody applied?
Well, there's no application yet.
I see, okay.
It's a difficult process. So we have a consultant, and she's going to, the thing is, she's meeting with DHCD the day before to even, no one knows what the program is. No one knows what's required. It's literally been created with federal government funding, required for the state to run it, and then the towns have to do it. So the good news is Bellingham's the lead. They're really, the headache is really there. Thank you, Bellingham. But I don't have any answers. So that's why, and that's what I'm hoping that the people on 16th understand, is we might not have a ton of answers, but we really are moving this forward as fast as we can. And we do have $90,000 in Foxborough to give to, or we will have it, to give to small businesses. So stick with us, get your name in there, even if you, it's questionable, there's no harm in getting on the list because you'll have to apply. So anybody who applies, and if they're not eligible, they're not eligible. But certainly, right now, we're accepting names and emails, so then that way you'll be notified. So anybody can contact me, and the more the merrier. And lastly, special town meeting. Currently, there's no state budget. You know, they passed a temporary budget. There's nothing, we're going off of state budget through the end of October right now. So without any state numbers, there's really no reason for the town to meet and bring a bunch of people together. So they do believe there will be a town meeting at some point, probably before May town meeting, but really, it's going to probably depend. Word is, is it's questionable whether anything would get done at the state level until the Feds Act, whether that would happen before the election. So this is all, we're just waiting. And right now, there's no local aid, so everybody's sort of sitting and waiting to see what happens. So as of now, we don't believe there will be a town meeting, but that could change depending on circumstances. And then, oh, I have two other things. I'll be out of, well, I don't know where I'm going to be. I'm doing a day-long, three days of training next week. So I'm trying to decide, probably going to do it from home, but it's, I don't know what it's going to be like to spend all those hours on Zoom, so I might want to change the scenery. I don't know how it's going to go. I don't know what this class is like. This is a procurement class through the state. It's actually going to help me a lot because I write a lot of RFPs, and I wing it a lot. So this will be great. In the past, you'd have to go to Boston three days a week, three days in a row, and I never really got around to doing that. So this is actually great that it's on Zoom, but I'm very curious how it's going to go. And they're running it through UMass's blackboard program, so that makes me feel like it's going to be a classroom setup, you know? So I might be in class. So I have no idea what's going to happen. And lastly, second lastly, is that the Board of Selectmen has asked various departments to come to their meetings. I don't know if anybody's seen their meeting, and I guess Chris Gallagher did one. So we've been asked to go in, I'm going to go in October 13th. Board members are welcome. I don't know that it's the planning board, or is the planning department?
I think it's the department.
Okay. So you're all welcome. I'm going to be putting together a little, did they do like slide shows or anything? Or just talk?
No, nothing like that. I mean, it was very informative, because he had a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
But it seems just like a basic, you know, rundown of what your staff is working on, you know, at the present time, and that's kind of it.
So I'm doing that.
What's the purpose behind that? Have they done it before?
No. It was because in the, in the budgeting process, there were quite, basic questions like, you know, well, we really aren't even sure what such and such, what's going on in such and such departments, so, you know, is that really conducive to the best allocation of resources or dollars? And so this kind of came up. And when Chris Gallagher came, I mean, it was informative, you know, just because he's got a lot of stuff, you know, going on.
Yeah, he's got a lot. I feel bad every time I send him another message. I'm like, I'm so sorry.
I hope that they're an enterprise fund, too, though.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. So that'll be, and I think it's, it's all part of sort of the transparency, you know, letting everybody know what we do. I know right before the shutdown, there was a whole Citizen Academy going on. It was really trying to draw folks in to understand what it is the town does and how much goes on. So I just got, I just volunteered for that date today, so I didn't want to do Tuesday nights.
Is that come even meeting right now, or no?
No.
I don't think so.
No, there's nothing to talk about. So that's all I have.
Okay. Very good. Anything on active subdivisions, Cam?
I got a report today from, from Norm, our inspector. He's working London Estates. They're marking trees or planting. They're planning on doing the sidewalk, finishing the sidewalk before winter. They've, they've paved the new road, Crocker Way, so they're, they're starting to pull building permits for that. The River Ridge is underway. He's been involved there, and it's been having a nice time with the developers there. So he's happy. A happy Norm is a good thing. And the other, the other things that he's working on is on Perry Drive and 9 Perry Drive and Fortinet Road that, that's been going on forever, but he's been, he's been a little busy, so it's good.
On London Estates, and I know this doesn't really fall under our purview, but is there any plans for Mike to clean up the sides in the middle? It's turning into a jungle.
So it's funny you say that. I talked to him tonight. He called me for something else, and I said, can you, can you get the entrance cleaned up? It looks terrible. So the right side is owned by that, the old Ferguson homestead. So he has to talk to them, but then he has to take care of his piece, too.
And then the middle strip?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
All right, very good. So we've been slightly past 7:05 p.m. We have the River Ridge subdivision, request for, to set a performance guarantee and request lot releases.
You have in your packets a letter from Mr. Buckley with his estimate for the, the work for the first road, Souza Avenue. They, they're building a cul-de-sac. This is off East Belcher Road.
Okay. Oh, is this the one at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So there's a cul-de-sac that connects Souza with, I can't remember the other street name. Yeah.
Barrows.
Barrows, okay. So this is the estimate just for that, that portion of the subdivision. The, the pricing that is that Mr. Buckley uses is the mass EOT, so it's prevailing wage. So the, my suggestion is that the board added the 20% contingency. I prepared a memo. So I would request that the board set the performance guarantee for that amount.
So that's the 247, 964, 22?
Yes. You can round it up.
What's that?
You can round it up if you like.
Please don't, because, because they're already doing the bond documentation.
We will not round it up.
There you go. We will, we'll let it go with that, then, Mr. Buckley. Anybody have any questions or comments about any of the information that's, that's submitted?
No.
John, or anybody else?
I do not.
That is enough. And I'll entertain a motion to approve a bond amount, a bond in the amount of 247, 964, 22, as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Close in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
We also have a request for the release of the lots that are in that phase of the, of the subdivision, and I would like to request the board to consider releasing the lots contingent to the bond money being submitted to the, to the town.
So that, those are the lots, 1 to 8, and 18 to 19?
Yes.
Anybody who has any questions or problems with that? I'll entertain a motion to release the lots as requested.
So moved.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Actually, wasn't there a question about the trucking material down Spring Street or something, wasn't there?
Yes.
Controversy about that. Has that been addressed?
I don't know. I wasn't part of that. I know that the building inspector and the town engineer were dealing with them.
I can't even remember where I heard it.
I believe that came up in Chris Gallagher's report that we're just talking about. And so everything is going out by the rinks at this point. That was the issue. There were, early on, and then I guess there was one point where it was a different contractor on site unfamiliar with the situation and sent some traffic down Spring Street, which we knew was going to be a problem.
Because I was part of our planning board approval.
Can't they put a sign? Hey, I'm hopeful, they do it by-
I don't mean to laugh.
They do it by the burrow, and it works, for the most part.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Tracy.
Could they put a sign that they just can't go down there?
Yes. I mean, leave, it's not, it's the, I don't think the issue is leaving the site going down there. I think it's coming to the site.
It's kind of like dumping Station Road, like no 18-wheelers can go down it, and there's a sign right at the beginning. So why don't they just put a sign at the top of the street? Entrance to blah, blah, blah needs to be via blah, blah, blah.
We can do anything like that, but where, where would you think it should go?
Well, which road are they going down that they shouldn't be? Spring?
I guess it was Spring, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So down at Spring and Central, you mean?
Maybe.
I mean, it could be. I, the only, I would just suggest, if you wanted to go ahead in that direction, probably just touch base with-
Chris Gallagher.
With Gallagher, just because it was my impression that that issue had been largely addressed. I could be wrong.
That's my understanding as well. My understanding is that it was an issue. They spoke to the developer. He reconciled that it was just that one paver who came in that one day who didn't know, and then they won't be paving for a while. So I think that may be a good idea if there's a continued problem.
Could you just check with Chris?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, quick question for you. You seen Jim Toomey?
It says something here about-
On Toomey has a son, Jim.
Are we getting, are we going to endorse the plans later on for school?
Yes.
Okay. So it being sometime past 7:15 p.m., we have a public hearing for an accessory apartment at 52 Alden Street.
Yeah, it's good to hear. It's good, Kevin.
Good evening. If you'd like to come a little closer, you're welcome to, whatever works.
You're going to need to speak into a microphone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You can feel like you're on American Idol.
Oh, geez. How is my mother going to get the mic? We're, we're okay.
I'll just come with you in case you have questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Cheryl Jacobs, 52 Alden Street.
Great.
I'm Ryan Sheehan. I'm the contractor.
Nice to meet you, brother.
You as well.
We're waiting on you to tell us.
My, my last name is Sheehan.
So we had submitted an application for an accessory apartment to add on to my husband and our, our single-family home to accommodate these two clowns in the back. Those are my, my parents who need some help, and we would love to bring them into the fold. So we contracted with an architect to take a look at how to make the plans work within the guidelines established by the, the town, engaged with Ryan, then to ensure all of that is according to, you know, the guidelines that, that are in place. So we are, we're looking for permission to move forward with that, that project, and certainly welcome any questions.
So the addition is 788 square feet?
It is. Correct.
And there was, there was a question from the Board of Health at some point about discrepancy, or the 18 by 24 versus 17 by 24. Was that corrected?
Yeah, the, the proposed site plan had the addition, it was a foot bigger than it, than actually is. So the, the survey has corrected that.
And what's going to be the layout of the addition?
So the addition is, is two floors. So there is a, on the bottom floor, there's a, a living room and a kitchen, and there's one entrance to the existing home on that level, so on the second floor. Then there's a staircase to the top floor where it's a, a large bedroom and a walk-in closet and a handicap accessible bathroom. And then there's another entrance to the main house on that second floor. So there's two connections between the, the two residences. Yes.
And there's, how do you enter in from the outside?
So there would be a door, so as you approach the, the side of the house, so, so the addition is proposed toward the back. It's kind of like a nice little corner tucked in, so there'd be an external door on the right side of the house that would enter into that, that bottom level. So enter into the living area, kitchen area. Exactly.
Okay. Any questions for anybody so far?
Anything in the file?
Yeah, there is. Well, the first one was the one that I spoke to Mr. Sheehan about already, about the discrepancy for 17 by 24 versus 18 by 24. It's been corrected. It says here also from the Board of Health, septic system on file is designed for three bedrooms, in which they say it will continue to be a three-bedroom house. In order to sign off on this property, we'll need a certified plot plan that demonstrates proposed work and relational septic components. Has that been done?
Yes, it has. The, they're removing a bedroom on the second floor and adding one on the accessory apartment, so it'll remain a three-bedroom. So swapping it.
Yeah, they're, they're actually removing a wall between two bedrooms and making a larger bedroom. So I think that that's a better change than that we've used to, you know, with people turning it into a study.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I have two boys that will now share a room, so they are, yeah.
It's good for them.
It is. That's what we, that's what we tell them, but-
It'd be good for them. I don't know about-
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
How old are they?
Exactly. I have three boys, 17, 13, and 11.
There's still a question from the Board of Health about their relocating the, the septic tank, because the addition would be where it currently is, right?
The addition's going to go over where the existing tank is?
It's not going to go over. There's, there's a new proposed driveway that would go over the existing tank. So we've shown it on the plan that we're going to relocate the tank. We're basically taking the tank and turning it 90 degrees. And I spoke with, I think, Pauline.
Yes.
And she had a couple of recommendations, and we added those notes on the plan, on the site plan. It's noted as number eight. She was concerned about the, the tank being now close to the new driveway, so she asked if we would just make that a heavy-duty tank that could withstand a car. So, we put that in a H20 loaded tank.
I'm sure the, I'm sorry, the plot plan that you guys have is not up to date. So, that's why you don't have no date.
You don't have no date.
You don't have an eight.
So, I'm sorry, I made the copies before I got the plans. So, Pauline has the plans now, she hasn't commented on them, because it was in the afternoon. My suggestion is if the board feels comfortable to vote to approve this contingent, the, subject to the Board of Health approving this, this change.
One other thing I'd like to add to the septic, to the septic concerns, and it's an easily resolvable problem, because it looks as if you're going to have to get an H20 loading tank. So, you're probably going to wind up buying a whole brand-new tank. And when you put that in, you need to be 10 feet off a foundation with a septic tank. The way the tank is today, I, I don't have a scale with me, but it appears to be quite a bit less than 10 feet. So, Paul, it should be brought to Pauline's intention, attention, in case she missed it, that the tank has to be at least 10 feet off the foundation.
Yeah. Yeah, on the, on the new-
That's standard, that's, that's standard.
Yeah, on the new plan, it shows it at, at 12 feet.
Yeah.
And, and the new pipe is going to go under that, that new driveway, so we're going to use a heavier pipe.
Probably go to Schedule 80.
We'll go Schedule 80 pipe there. And we made those notes on the plan.
Yeah.
So, I think we covered her questions.
Yeah.
With that additional note, that I guess you guys don't have that planned, but-
Gabby, do you concur?
I concur.
Okay.
And you're aware that, you know, this is just for your family members, and-
Yes.
If there's any change of, you know, in the future, where your parents leave or, or whatever, and they decide to, and you, and you, you could still extend it to a different family, if your kid went away to college and came back.
Nope, nope, not happening.
You know, whatever.
No one's coming back.
It's on public record.
You know what I'm saying? I'm just pointing, I'm just pointing.
You're not allowed. I, I want that stricken. I don't, I want the-
I'm not suggesting you do.
Contingent on the, can't come back. No, thank you.
If your husband's parents wanted to come.
Right. No, definitely not. No.
He's, what Kevin's trying to say is it can just be used by a family member.
Thank you. I, I, we understand that. Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody else have anything?
No, I think it's good. It meets our requirements for square footage, the exterior entrance, and-
Yep, septic.
And connection between the two residences.
Yeah, we had, we had one neighbor come just to look at the plans, and, and he was fine with it, so.
Okay.
No concerns.
So, if there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve pending any open items from the Board of Health.
So moved.
Second. Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She, Mr. Sheehan, are you coordinating with the surveyor?
You're very welcome.
You're welcome.
Coordinating with the surveyor?
Good luck.
Jim Toomey. Young guy with Russian.
Yeah.
Let me give you his card.
Did you take your mom's hearing aids away from her tonight?
I will. I worked for his dad for many, many years.
Make motion to adjourn.
I got to do the same card.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
She's in a rush tonight.